Meeting at seven o'clock with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We consider the republic of rich and sound, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first order of business is to open the public hearing for this special use permit at 64 Rochester Street for the accessory dwelling unit. It's the day residence. We're going to open that up and we're going to do a little business, see if anybody has any public comment on that, and we'll get to the public hearing here in a minute. We have, just so everyone knows, the meeting's being videotaped, it's on our YouTube channel. Somebody's actually watched our YouTube channel, so awesome. We have two meeting minutes to approve. The first one is August 18th. Just as a reminder, we saw the Albemarle Healthy Foods special use permit and site plan at that meeting. Seems like a very long time ago.
Yes.
Yes, it does.
So has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes? Do you have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Kate, second? Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we had our media, or special meeting on November 3rd to see the special use permit and site plan for 64 Rochester Street for the accessory dwelling unit. Everybody had a chance to look over them? Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Kate, second? Dave, all in favor? Aye. Okay. All right. So onward with the public hearing. You should have a copy of the Genesee County Planning Board referral notice of final action. This had to go to the county because it was within 500 feet of Buffalo Road. We got back their final action and it was approval with no modifications. So on the back, there is a lovely photograph that the county sends us of Robin's property. So do we have anybody in the audience who would like to, who's here for the public hearing? Like to speak or say anything? Okay, I was going to have you guys tell us what it was about, but since there's nobody here, we all heard except for Dave, they are putting an accessory dwelling unit into the large garage. It will be enclosed in the garage, so there's no exterior door that needs to be worried about. The garage door will go up, they'll go in. And Scott and Jake were here to go over everything. Planning Board was very happy with the plans, clearly the county was very happy with the plans, so. We did do a public notice of the hearing. It was posted at the library, at the post office, on our door, in front of the property at 64 Rochester Street, and Barb did mail to everyone who was within 500 feet of the property. So everybody got a letter. We got one phone call in regards to this. They couldn't make it, they just had a few questions about where it was going to be. Was it owner occupied? What happened if you moved? Would it still have to be owner occupied? And a few questions about the septic, they were very happy. So that is the only contact we have had about the special use permit. Does anybody on the planning board have any questions?
I got one question. Did they determine whether or not you're going to need a separate septic tank for that? Or are you going to hook into your existing one?
We have determined that you're hooking into your existing.
Okay. That was up in the air the last time.
I believe that that, I talked with our plant operator a little further after our meeting. That is the preference, just like any other. You would be charged with a one and a half unit, that being the half, just like any other two-family. As long as it can be done properly with the angle into the septic tank, I believe that that is the way we prefer to do it. So when you get to Gary with the building permit, that will be more of a conversation, but we did not discuss putting in another tank. That was actually one of the questions by the folks who were inquiring. Okay, so we're going to leave the public hearing open. I mean, we just opened it, so we're going to leave it open for about 10 minutes, just in case anybody's late, running late, whatnot, they want to make a comment. So we're just going to set that to the side. And we're going to talk about a couple of things, and then we also have some new business on the docket. I have reached, we were kind of brainstorming in the office for the planning board folks and how we could have more of a sense of community, especially with the town of Bergen, the town of Bergen Planning Board. So I reached out to Gary Fink, who is the planning board chair over there at the town, and the mayor reached out to Ernie Haywood, the supervisor. Ernie Haywood, and I think they're on board. They're going to talk about it at their planning board meeting tomorrow. But we'd like to do something collectively with all of us. Now that we have a new zoning law, kind of explain our zoning law to them, what our zoning law's all about, hot topics, what's happening in the town, what's happening in the village, maybe do a joint training together, since the fall training session really didn't have anything. Barb and I didn't do any of it here in the office. We did not think it was applicable to us here, it was very specific. We all need the four hours of training, we thought it might be nice to do it jointly. We used to do that, actually, with the town, and the town of Churchill, and the town of Byron, everybody was invited, so hopefully we're going to get together and maybe have a joint meeting and a joint training.
They meet, you said they meet on Thursday night?
They meet on Thursday, so they're meeting tomorrow. For their meeting, so we could either meet at their time, they can meet at our time, we can meet at a completely different time, you know, whatever the case. If we did do, maybe, we were saying maybe Felipe would be interested in coming back. We haven't seen him in a long time. I'm sure there's.
I've never seen him.
You haven't?
I've been on this planning board for five, six years.
Wow, okay, it's been that long? Wow, time goes by very quickly. We used to have joint trainings with Felipe all the time, and we would have it at the church, actually. But now that we have Sage, we can do that. It would be great if he came in from the county, gave us an overview of what's going on. I think there's so many things that we could do. I think, yeah, yeah, I think it has that.
With COVID, time is all very strange, you know?
That's the truth. So that's happening, they're going to discuss it at their meeting on Thursday, so we'll hear about, hear back from Gary, but he said he was very excited about it, so I would assume they'd want to do something joint with us. You know, we're okay people, so.
We certainly are.
I think that they would, I think that it would be great, and I'd love to hear what's happening in the town, like what their struggles are, what their hot topics are. The other thing we talked about today, we talked with Courtney about this. Nikon is doing, and not everyone's going to be able to do this. Nikon is doing trainings for planning and zoning boards. It's called the Planning and Zoning Webinar Series. Barb, refresh my memory, that we went to some of them last year. Again, it was COVID.
Went.
Went to visually or Zoom or whatever, attended. But they have one, two, three, four, four sessions. And we were discussing with Courtney, having them here, they cost $30 in inviting the town. ZBA, obviously village, ZBA, and then inviting the town if they would like to come, kind of that can be one of our joint trainings. The first one is regulating cannabis operations. They're in December, from 10 to 11. So I know it's a tough time if you work, but if you are in town. Ethics for ZBA and planning board proceedings, planning and zoning hot topics, in case law update, always a favorite, and fair housing considerations for municipalities. So they're pretty decent trainings. We'll send out the dates, if you can make it, great, we're going to set up the TV in here and, you know, just go at it. And if you can't, we will let you know what the hot topics are. So that's that, anything else? So I'm kind of excited, I'm kind of excited to do something with the town. It's been a long time, and we're talking about it with the mayor, and it's been a long time since we've done anything, and I don't know, I'm feeling, I'm feeling a sense of community myself, you know, with everything.
We had two joint meetings that we would hold every year. And before COVID, it was the last one we had, so it's been quite some time. And it was always good to just sit together and touch base and kind of review what's going on in the town, in the village, and because we're pretty connected, so. So we're going to work on making that happen again. Okay.
We're connected in many ways. All right. So we haven't had any stragglers for the public hearing, so we are going to move on then to the seeker. So Robin dropped off the seeker, I was off yesterday. Or is it somebody? Oh, Scott dropped it off, okay, Scott dropped off the seeker yesterday. So we have the part one. Do I have a motion to take lead agency on the seeker for 64 Rochester Street?
Yes.
Kate, second? Todd, all in favor? Okay, so we will take lead agency on that. We'll just get started.
I was going to say, Renee, you finning down this, this rodeo is not your first rodeo.
I know.
You can go through this.
I probably should start memorizing. Okay, will the proposed action create material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Our answers are no, or small impact, or moderate to large. No? Will the proposed action result in change in the use or intensity of the land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of the critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate responsibly available energy conservation and renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies or public and private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action impair the character, quality of the important historical, archaeological, I can never say that, architectural or aesthetic resources? I get tongue-tied on that number eight, I have to work on that. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? So no to all. So we have determined that this is a negative declaration. Just give me a second to do a little paperwork here. So for those of you who aren't here for the public hearing, we do that to make sure that everything is environmentally friendly, that we are working on with the accessory dwelling unit that she has proposed. All right, we will send that over to the county with our final notice of final action. Okay, do, I have a motion to close the public hearing. Kate? David, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So. Alrighty. So. I think we're all in agreement that this is a fantastic project, we're super excited about it, we're very happy for you and your family. It's been a long time coming to be able to do these things with big garages, big barns in the village. This is one of the, I'm getting goosebumps, it's one of the reasons we did this zoning law, looking at all these things. You know, we want to keep family close where we can. We want to be able to have income where we need it, so just thrilled for the project. Do I have a motion to pass the special use permit for 64 Rochester Street for the accessory dwelling unit inside the garage structure? Kate, second? Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So there's a couple of things that we need to do. Tomorrow, I'll have all your paperwork so that you can get the building permit over to Gary. I'll issue an actual special use permit, we have the capacity. So there's no modification, there's no anything that you have to do other than it is straightforward what you gave us. I have to issue the special use permit, I also need to do the notarized letter that you are the owner as part of the accessory dwelling unit. I'll put that all together, give me the morning, and then you can get the building permit over to Gary. I've already given them a set of the plans. Okay, so then you should be all set to go as soon as you have a letter, the special use permit, and the notarized will all be in your file. You'll have it for your reference, and then it's all about Gary. Alrighty. And I will get the final, I have to send something over to the county, and we'll send that over with the seeker. It just says that we did approve it, so. All right, you guys are all set?
Yay!
All right. Let me get this out of the way. All right, so we're moving on to our new business. All right, Mr. Bratt, we have on the agenda a preliminary view of a subdivision at 10 Buffalo Road. The property is owned by Larry Bratt. Do you have the copies of the survey for us?
I do.
Okay, so we'll each take one. Thank you. Alrighty. That's okay, we have things that we need to do with the rest of them. Okay, there you go. Gary, you want one?
Yep.
Okay, so, Mr. Bratt, would you like to tell us what you are planning on doing?
Sure. It's, well, according to the tax map, it's a 3.1 acre lot, and I propose to cut off 0.87 acres at the north, northeastern end of it. And there are three frame storage sheds on that parcel, on that piece. Now, the line that is shown down in the middle, it has a little zigzag in it, that's the proposed line. I wanted the surveyor to put it in, that's a dotted line, but.
This one?
Right, that's the proposed cut between the two of them.
So you would be sharing a driveway? Correct?
Yes. Yes. Not that it's necessary, there's a driveway up the other side of the house.
Okay, so he's in the low-density residential area. Let's just take a look here. Let's just go to our handy table, page seven. So this is going to remain non-residential? The parcel that you're, the smaller parcel that you're... So you're going to remain the owner of both?
I plan to sell off the smaller parcel, the part with the three storage sheds.
So it's a non-residential use?
Right.
Then it would be a non-residential use because it's a barn?
At least temporarily, if the new buyer decides to put a house on it, what? Do you have to change the zoning on it?
No, but there's just different dimensional requirements for that parcel, depending on whether it's a single or two-family dwelling or a non-residential use, which is.
Oh, right, that's right, the word.
You're intending it to sell for someone to create a residential?
So that he has the potential to do that. I found a buyer, and he's not indicated that he's going to put a house on it. He just wants it for the storage units.
Well, that's why I was going to say, for a non-residential use, it's 25,000 square feet. For a single or two-family dwelling, it's 15,000 square feet.
Yeah, this is way over both of those. It's 160 feet frontage.
It would require 100 feet frontage.
Are there utilities to those barns? Like, do they have electric and plumbing and so forth, sewer? Or just the house, the, I assume electric, but?
There are utilities, but they come from the house.
Gotcha.
You can see a dotted line there between the house, direct line down to the barn. They're all buried.
Yeah, we were discussing this today, actually. If this was subdivided and sold, the new buyer would have to put in new electric service.
That's mandatory in a storage building?
He doesn't have to have electric service, but you can't supply him electric service, that would have to be cut.
Right. Right, that's okay. And is it the same for the water service?
For the water? That would be Monroe County Water, you would have to deal with them on that.
Oh, okay, great.
As far as the septic, if there was going to be any type of bathroom in the barn, then you would have to put, they would have to put a septic tank over there, at the owner's expense.
Okay, but that's not mandatory until he puts up a dwelling, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That was one of my biggest questions.
This is kind of, I'm just looking at the rear setbacks. It's, I'm assuming that it's, there's three different structures, so none of them are the primary use structure. I'm assuming they're all accessory uses? It's kind of hard to tell. Minimum rear setback for a primary use or structure is 40 feet. I mean, would the barn be considered that, the big barn? Or are they all considered accessory use?
What's the center of the size?
Side setback, five feet on accessory use, 10 feet on a primary use.
And we have even, for either consideration?
Yeah. The, it looks like the lawn spot's not going to half. But if it's considered the accessory, an accessory use. What's the definition? It's not, we don't have one. This is a very, they're really three accessory uses, as they are with a primary dwelling, but if it's not with a primary dwelling, I'm assuming they're still accessory uses.
And they're not a dwelling.
Right.
They're not a, I mean.
Right. It's got to be an accessory structure, so it's five on the rear, five on the side, and 20 front setback, which it needs that easily. Lot width is 100, which it needs, and the minimum lot size is 25,000 square feet.
Did you say lot width is 100?
Yes.
I have 160.
Yeah, that's what you said, I met it easily.
Yeah, okay, I see.
Do you, I went back and looked in the file, your file for 10 Buffalo Road. This, these, you, this used to be two parcels.
Yes.
And they were merged.
That's right.
Is this the same?
No, it has nothing to do with the original.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I did not have the original, it was in 1999, I did not have the original subdivision. I only had the merger of the subdivision.
I have it here if you want to look at it.
No, that's, I was just curious if it was the same. Does anybody have any questions on it? So if you were to subdivide this and eventually sell it, you would have to enter a shared driveway agreement?
Right.
With the new owner? Okay.
Now, connecting an exception to that in view of the fact that there's another driveway out the other side of the garage.
You still share it, it's still on the lot line, so you would have to, it's not a, it's not a difficult agreement to have, but because it does, they are required to have a setback off a lot line, and because it is not, then you would, you are basically sharing it.
The driveway setback?
Yes.
Are you referring to the length of the driveway that crosses the?
That is correct.
The lot line, all right, okay, no problem.
It just goes in both aisles, just so that.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Are you good?
Yep, I'm having a time.
If someone was to, whoever purchases this property and decided at some point in the future to convert that large barn into a home, the setbacks wouldn't um meet what's necessary for it.
I don't believe so, but let me go back to.
Because as an accessory structure, we do. But if it becomes a residence, then it wouldn't.
Um. That is correct. It would not meet the side setback.
Right.
On the, on the, um, I don't know what. The nine point three would need a area variance.
And I would assume too that, let's say that a future owner looked at this and said, wow, it'd be a great place to put a house in front of that barn. They would come back and ask for this to be re-zoned as a residential parcel, correct?
It's cur, it's, it will continue to be zoned a residential. It's just an accessory use on a residential, right. They would just, i- if they wanted to put a house on that empty park in the front.
Yeah, like in front of the.
They would have to meet all of the requirements. Let's say, um, eighty-foot width. Twenty feet is the front setback. That would probably be the one. Ten feet side setback, forty-foot rear setback, which would, they'd meet that. They definitely could, it, they certainly could do that. Looks to me.
That's
Yeah.
how I would look at that, thinking about it.
Mm-hmm. That would be problematic to convert the barn, but you could definitely build on the front. The only problem is how many accessory structures can you have on a parcel? But it, it's all. It's not new build, so it would be.
So it's already, it's already there. One parcel.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's actually one less because one shed would go into the other behind an existing house and drop with that parcel.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Any, do you have any other questions, Tom? Is that it?
That was it.
David? Yeah. Anybody else? Gary, anything?
Yeah. Are you saying it would be a problem to construct a house on the property because there are too many accessory buildings?
We're, no, because they're already existing. It's not like you're putting up a new one.
Okay. All right.
The prob, the, the problem would be if you sold the property and if the new owner wanted to convert the barn to a residence.
Yeah, because of the, what, is it eight inches?
It's, it's.
Side set?
The side setback is ten feet and it, that is the nine point. Nine point three.
Three, I think it says.
So that would not meet the requirements. But there is, it does look like there is enough frontage to be able to put a house in front of a big barn. If, if a new owner wanted to do that.
Okay.
So. Does this mean you're not leaving us, Larry?
Um, I think we're gonna wind up doing it snowboarding. We'll be here six months and gone to Mexico for today month.
All right. I don't think, I mean, okay. So, um, we will put you on the agenda for next month for the subdivision. Okay, I need to have you fill out, this was a preliminary.
Yes.
Um, that you filled out, the paperwork that we have. I'll get you the paperwork um to do the subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll need the big copies of this, the twenty-four by thirty-sixes. Uh, nope, that size is what we need.
Oh, even bigger?
Yeah, twenty-four by thirty-six. It's all, it's all in the information I gave you, how many copies we need of everything. This, the reason we couldn't see it tonight was because we didn't have the surveying map until.
Five o'clock this afternoon.
Till right now. So.
That's when I go.
But at least we could have a discussion about it. We could, yes, we couldn't have done this without it, so even last minute, it was good to, to be able to see, see the survey. Um, we can go over all that when you fill out the paperwork. Um, there'll be a fee to come to the planning board. Uh, it will be required. I gave you a bit of a timeline. There will be a public hearing, it will have to go to the county. Um, there's a lot that, that's wrapped up in this, so.
Concerning the public hearing, would that be next month?
Um.
Think fifteen?
It could be, yes. Either way, whether we have the public hearing on the fifteenth before we get the Genesee County um approval or disapproval or modification, um, we can't take any action on this until January. Regardless, because it has to go to the county.
Right.
And their meeting is on the thirteenth of January.
Okay.
So it will, we will not make the um meeting for December. But, I mean, it's up to the planning board whether you wanna have the public hearing next month or you wanna have the public hearing in January. It, it's completely either way. And we can do it on the fifteenth and. All right, do you have a motion to hold a public hearing for a subdivision at Ten Buffalo Road on December fifteenth?
Pending receipt of all the additional information that we need.
Okay?
Yes.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Good catch. All right, so public hearing. We will get, um, come into the office and we can go over everything. Um, we'll have to post on your property, the public hearing, um, like we posted on Robin's property. Take a look at it on your way home. I'll be opening it tomorrow. Uh, we'll have to post on the property, um, that is going to be a subdivision. At that point in time, we'll determine what type of subdivision it's going to be. It is going to be a minor subdivision, but we will officially make that declaration at the next meeting when we get all the information, so. Also, um, everything, once, just so you know how this works, once everything is wrapped up, there's some specific things that you have to get the planning board, um, milars that have to go to the county for the subdivision. They have to take care of that. You have to take care of getting that um done once we approve it. We don't do that, so. All right? Okay. Great. Anybody have anything else? Full meeting, we thought we were in a zoning law.
I know. The due ends in merging.
There we go. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?